In alignment with the data piece. So just you're focusing on the student achievement piece, but please know that there's a whole other trail going on over here on the progress. And then that progress is even broken down further by just growth from one year to the next and comparison from our district to districts that are similar. And so those are just the two pieces.
But for third grade, is there a growth measure? Because they haven't taken star before.
There isn't a growth measure for third grade. But if you were to choose a different grade level like third and fourth, you could measure the progress four to six, six to six, and so on. So as in third grade, yes, we are just taking a look at, but there is a progress that we measure internally using a state benchmark, which is our ANFO five, which is similar to the data that I presented to the board last year. So we will have our boy data for all of our third graders. And internally, we're going to have our own progress measures to see what growth we're using on our students from third grade beginning of year to third grade of middle of year, which we're scheduled to report to you all, and then middle of year to end of year. So from the star level, there's that piece, but from the state recommended benchmark, there's the growth measure.
And so I just want to make sure that we're, so in domain one, we're talking about achievement, which is what this goal is faced, is based on third grade achievement. The progress measures that you're talking about that show growth can be progress measures. They are predictive of this goal, of this achievement goal. Am I correct? So if, if the growth goals that we want to measure are the growth progress, the progress that you're talking about, those could be measured through progress goals, right? There are interim assessments, beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. So they could still, the board could still see the data, and that data would be predictive of this achievement goal. Am I correct? In theory?
In theory, in theory, because the state is recognizing that not, might not be their best measure, but yet in theory.
But it is, domain one is an achievement domain.
You are correct.
In the, at the state level.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And when you're saying achievement, you're talking about meets grade level or are you talking about also approaches grade level?
Either one, they're both achievement.
So the 40% that's recommended is meets grade level, am I, is that correct?
Yes.
Part of the reason why 57 was put on the table was because we made a very hefty investment in pre-K three and pre-K four, which means we have kids that are supposed to be starting out of the gate a lot more prepared. And as a result, we should see that investment yield very quick results in third grade, no quick in a five-year span is what I mean. So if we've done our best to get kids out of the gate well, they should be performing well in first grade, even better in second grade, which means we should see that finally be measured in third grade. So that's why the number came up in the 57 percentile, because it was like, if we've made this investment, when are we going to see the results of that investment?
And I think if it was a normal year, you know, we would probably see the investment quicker, but when you think about it, and I don't remember who shared with me today, there's truly been some students that have not, that are third graders right now, and they haven't been in school since first grade.
And I will add, I will.
About five years from now, they will have had a more standard.
And we're talking about today's pre-K three, pre-K four that are coming in. And secondly, I conceded the fact that that number could be applicable to only those that went through pre-K three, pre-K four. I can respect the fact that if they didn't come in and they jumped in in second grade or third grade, they would impact our numbers, but we could disaggregate that to kind of get a better benchmark. And I think that's a fair thing to do.
Except that those students right now who started with us pre-K three, which was our first year last year, won't be part of this.
They'll be in second grade.
Right.
Five years.
So in five years.
So pre-K four, whatever we need to make it work, but the intent is that investment is what the expectation would be for shifting a lot of our strategy behind that.
So I think your goal on number five would be indicative of that, but still even the kindergarten really won't actually be reached until five years from now to reach third grade.
So I think we have a goal of trying to address the efficacy of the pre-K program.
And just so I understand it, so if, if we did a six-year goal, 57% would be viable? Because you're saying 40% because it's within the five, because pre-K three is not part of that, that thing. But would I expect that on the sixth year, that next group of third graders to be at 57%? Based on that, on that.
Based on that, the current pre-K three or right now in pre-K four.
Because I would certainly take a six-year goal of getting to 57 if that's what that, but I, basically, we just all need to challenge ourselves and of course, ask from the board, what do we need to make that happen? I personally think our decision to have pre-K three and pre-K four is affirmative that we should expect better results.
And I, I would agree. However, just as we're looking at the numbers right now of our enrollment of pre-K three and pre-K four, we're not looking at every pre, third, three-year-old and four-year-old in Judson I C being enrolled in that program. So to say that a whole cohort of kids are going to move and show that level of performance is saying that every child that could be in pre-K three and pre-K four are enrolled in pre-K three and four. Does that make sense? Which is why we're doing it right now, because what's happening is that parents are choosing some, in some cases, not enrolling their kids even in kindergarten and bringing them in at first grade. So even coming in just at first grade, we're already seeing the significant gap in performance because they don't have to come to Kinder. So offering pre-K three and pre-K four is the intent that we're going to be able to capture more kids and not just try to weight into the parents, have to bring them in in first grade, which where they are compelled to start their kids in school. Does that make sense? So we're not really capturing all of our three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And so the data that we're going to be trying to prove is, is you have to look at the entire cohort, not just the ones that enrolled in pre-K three and pre-K four.
I would hope that you look at all of them.
Yeah, we are looking at the whole cohort, but to say that we're going to jump to 57%.
From a real accountability standpoint, I can't make the superintendent accountable for 57% of those students who never touched a pre-K three and four. So I can only do that for those students that went through the program, and we should be able to monitor and see where their progress has been. That way it validates the investment that we have in our pre-K programming. That's all I'm saying. We can internalize it and make it our own. Naturally, all students need to be impacted based on the paper report.
But I guess I'm, maybe I'm getting a little confused because this, this one talks about third grade students.
Right.
But are we trying to change it?
I'm just saying that it doesn't have to. It can be adjusted to be indicative of only those that went through, if obviously my colleagues agree, but naturally.
We already have a, have one that looks just at our pre-K.
If you were to adjust this to only, only have, only measure the kids who have gone through the pre-K program, then you're, you're really not, I mean, you have to be responsible for all third graders regardless, right?
And that's a good question. That's a very fair question about if we're going to then take into account those students that did not join our pre-K three and four, what that measurable goal would be. Obviously, I as a board member would like to still see what our participation looked like in pre-K three and four and what the year, yield was at third grade and so on. But that is a fair question.
And I think that could be a progress measure too, so you could be tracking every year, you could be tracking just the kids who, you know, we're going to track all of our kids, but then we're also going to break it out. And we, we're not going to be, I think that's the other thing, that we could break out the ones who have attended Judson's pre-K program so that you can see the efficacy. The challenge will be that we don't have that data in the past, so we're going to create that data system moving forward because the, our, our kids weren't coded in the right way, that way to get it. But I think you're right, I think it's a really important component to, to check. But on this goal, I think we have to roll those kids up into this cohort. And so then if we have, you know, a group of kids who haven't been able to attend, attend pre-K, what is a feasible goal for that whole cohort? And so what your, your leaders are saying is that 57, which really would be 52, if we were to go back just with your bases on your percentage, is to, is unattainable. That's what they're saying. That one is beyond, and you know, when I remember when we talked about this, is you can set the goal wherever you want. But first of all, what we're doing is trying to create the conditions for success for our superintendent, our leadership team. Second of all, we only have so much money, we only have so many resources, right? And so, you know, if you set a goal that's very high and you don't resource it, then you haven't created the conditions for success. So we have to think about that while we're, when we're addressing this. Like, is there a, a place that you feel, all of you feel, is somewhere between the 40 and the 51? That fits?
What I might offer is like, to everybody, this is, I'm not like trying to like make a point to anybody in particular, but to me, the, hearing the context that you all have shared, like the 40, so I think about goals as like, let's set goals that are ambitious and feasible. And the 40 feels feasible, but not ambitious. The 57 feels ambitious, but not feasible. And so, and, and hearing what you said about like, it'll probably take five years to get to pre-pandemic levels. Our pre-pandemic level for third grade meets was 42. The state average was 45. And so to me, I might suggest 45 as like an ambitious and feasible option.
Couldn't say that, but it's not, well said, well said.
I, I agree with both of you all, however, but what I'm, what I'm talking about is our pre, our pre-K, I'm so sorry. That's why you didn't say nothing to me when I said how to say me, okay. I know you think I'm crazy now, okay.
Hard with math.
I apologize. I need to go up again, tag now. This is what I was wondering, the state number here, is this a, a roll-up of all third graders in the state of Texas? Or is this a recommendation that's being presented to the districts that this is the level that you should be at?
From the paper report that you all were reading last night, which is the pre-pandemic report, these is actual average. So when I say average, from all districts from us, so it's an average.
Okay, okay, okay. See, that, that, I had that number, the, the way I was looking at that number was wrong. Okay, thank you.
But to, to Ms. Eaton's point, I think she made a good point. That average, not that average, but that number is pre-pandemic. I, I wish that we had our taper report for now, that we won't be getting until November, because I think that that data would be valuable for us.
But that's what the 31 is, right?
Well, it's an estimate.
It's an estimate of what it's going to be.
It's an estimate, so that could, you correct me, it's, it could be one or two points different when we get the actual report.
And that's from last night, that's an estimate based on the fact that not all students took the star test, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's why we have an estimate, and that's why it's not counting this year, right?
My third grader did not take the star test.
So we can add that.
And lots of others did not.
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
Because our participation percentage this past school year was the lowest I've ever seen in Judson ISD.
Well, it was everywhere.
So a lot, but it was across the state, across the state. So we, the majority of our kids did not touch.
Yeah, because my daughter, she wouldn't let my grandson go. She's like, I didn't kept him out a year and a half, and you want me to take it one day and let him get his prep and, you know.
And plus, our commissioners told parents that they didn't have to come. They didn't have to touch.
So he didn't take it either off of seven.
Well, let me, let me add this though, because, I'm sorry, Ms. Eaton.
I'm sorry.
Are you, are you finished?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, didn't want to interrupt you. But the situation is this, that as Ms. DuHart Toppin had kind of mentioned about all students, the other emphasis is that we've made the investment in pre-K three and four, but we also must develop strategies for addressing students that come in in a highly mobile district to address those first graders and second graders, to get them up to par. We can't, you know, so in conjunction with the investment in pre-K three and four, I'm anticipating we're going to have increased strategies to address those students that come in in first and second grade, so they're ready in third grade, which should lend itself to still a more ambitious goal, as Ms. Rodriguez had mentioned, 40% being, being, you know, in the middle of that. So my, my hope would be that we've identified some strategies, and we're, we have ESAR funds, federal dollars, that are designed to help us bring more to the table. And there's 3 million, I think I saw in our ESAR fund budget though, that I asked Dr. Ball to present, that's dealing with social emotional, which that also addresses social emotional first grade and the second grade. I'm just telling you, there are a lot of things in, in the place that will help us increase, or should, if done efficiently, increase results.
And I have no doubt that it will, it's just a matter that it's going to take time.
Well, and that's where there's five years. And again, I told you, and on record again, I'm not looking, I'm happy with you as superintendent. Certainly, we want to continue to work together to get there, but we need to set a nice benchmark to say this is what, where we want to go.
And we're okay with 45?
Yes. And I can imagine us setting intervals that are smaller at the beginning, because let's face it, this year is also not easy. There are no such issues to be had that sort of turn or not, like, like, I get it. And, and, but that like, once the, all the things that we put in place begin to take their effect, then, you know, we might see a larger jump in the later, in the last year or so.
Okay, good. So we've got a 45, which is getting us back to the state average, pre-pandemic.
Over the state average a little bit, but yes, pre-pandemic.
You what?
It's getting us over the state average.
Over the state average, all right. So are we okay with moving forward with that as our target? And does that feel, experts, attainable, but a challenge?
Yes.
Not an unreasonable challenge? I'm asking the question.
It, it would definitely be a challenge. I, I, you know, when principals look at this and teachers like this, it'll be a challenge, but we're definitely going to set some measures in place to help them work even further.
Okay, all right.
I really think that with, with where we were, hello? Do I sound different? I really think that where we were before the pandemic, that with, even with the after-school programs that you guys have set up and all the extra help, the bringing in the RT, extra RTIs and stuff, that it's going to, if we can just get this stuff under control and the kids can get to school, that once, you know, we get going with it, the initial is going to be a big jump. And then we'll level off and be able to do the two to 3% gradual increase over the five years. But I think that initially, it's going to be a nice little jump because the kids are excited. They want to be back in school. They, they want to not just see their friends, but they miss their teachers. They really do.
Well, and I will say, and I think all of us recognize this, but I think it needs to be said, is that nobody knows, because nobody's had to recover from a pandemic. So we don't know, right? So we are setting a goal as a, this is where we'd like to be, right? This is our goalpost, recognizing that, boy, we don't know what the journey's going to look like yet, quite yet, so.
And I wanted to point, I know that, I asked my colleagues, what, what separated you from Lone Star Governance or any other group? And that was the equity discussion. And the fact you had some, I think Ms. Rodriguez had mentioned that. So in terms of this evaluation that we're looking at now, we need to look at equity because we also know that the southern part of our district, Kirby, Woodlake, they're going to need more resources to get to that level. That 45% average, it could all be in Kitty Hawk, and if we're building a new middle school in the next five years, it could be at that new middle school on the north side. So when we look at this from an equity lens now, I'd like to know if we then incorporate a secondary, a part A, that, you know, Kirby is at a certain point, Woodlake is at a certain point, Metzger is at a certain point. So we have an overall 45, but we would have to evaluate then those individual campuses as well to ensure that the right progress is equitable across the district.
Absolutely.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Ms. Davis actually has that?
Yeah.
And I just do not remember, Mr. Macias, if you were on the board at that time, when she did it specifically by campus, but we could definitely bring it back up again?
Under, under this discussion?
Under the, under the goal that we had? So then now we'll take this goal and do it by campus.
So we can track, because that, you're right, it does affect how you might resource.
Well, and that's part of the strategies and the monitoring that we do, because you can't get to it as a whole in the district if the individual campuses aren't there. So that's something that, that, that I would, I assumed, maybe, would already be part of when we build in those, those benchmarks. Not only do you look at it district-wide, but did you look at individual campuses? So the ones that are struggling, yes, then you bring in more and go above and beyond.
Because in a, in a perfect, in a perfect equitable situation, I could expect every campus to be at 45%, but that's not going to be the case. So, so we certainly want to look at what we need to do to get that campus as close to that goal, knowing that Kitty Hawk and the other middle school may be at 55%.
Which is also why we would disaggregate them by student populations, so that we know if our, you guys saw the, the lines, right? The charts? And so if we know that our Latinx children are not reaching the mark as quickly, what kind of resources do we need to put in front of our children to make sure they're, we're closing those gaps? Because that was something you all talked about, is how are we closing the gaps on all of these goals? So we'll talk about that, which is also growth, a growth indicator, right? So we'll, I think we can disaggregate it so that we are really having all that data in front of us, and that's what the richness of having this framework is, is to have this data in front of you in order to make the decisions that you need to make as a board.
And so we would need to add it then, under these preliminary goals?
No, because we'll add it into the progress, progress measures, and they'll be disaggregated already. Yes, ma'am.
And just, just so the board knows, once these are approved by the board and these are officials, then our plan is to take these to the campuses, share that with the administrators, share that with their leadership team, and build their goals off of this information for us to be able to meet that. So it's all part of the site-based management, campus improvement plan cycle, district improvement plan cycle, that we'll be using this information. So I don't know if that helps, but I just wanted to share.
It does, and, and since I'm a for, for the record type of person, I want to say this too, for any of our educators and professionals that are listening, I wouldn't expect any of our teachers or campuses to make goals if they didn't feel supported or get the support that they needed. We can't put goals up and then not offer any support to our professionals to get the job done. So my expectation is that we would support them. And again, I'm saying this more for the record, because I want to be clear, I'm not just saying who's aim to see is, and my colleagues, we want this. It's all of us, we want to support that growth, and we're willing, at least I'm willing to, to see that through.
And, and for the record too, you know, we've already been talking, so in the next month, I'm already coming to the board with the things that we're going to need, because these are big goals, and I'm not about to fail, so.
Sure. Okay.
And it's not lost on us either, that like, it, it feels uncomfortable to have top-down mandates come through, and, and like, that applies to y'all sitting here, but also then all the way down to teachers and everybody who is a part of that. And so I love that that's going to be brought to the campuses to help them decide like, what's the part we're going to take on, like, what, what role can we play in this? And that they have some autonomy in how they are contributing to the bigger whole.
Really, what this, I mean, as opposed to feeling like a top-down mandate, what I hope it feels like is a goalpost that doesn't move on you. You know, how about a goalpost that just stands still for a little while so you can build the strategies and have the freedom to execute under your expertise to get there?
Instead of throwing the baby out with the bathwater, starting over. And I do also want to say that I have faith in our educators. We have amazing teachers. And yes, I know that they're tired from last year and this year, but I have no doubt that they want every child to succeed, and they want every child to attain that growth that they're due, and that they'll work really hard to get this done. But, but it's also not a gotcha. And I want to stress that too. We're not going to come back in five years and say, oh, y'all are all fired because you didn't make this goal. That is not what this is about. It's about working together in the district to move forward in critical areas that, that the board has said, this is what we think is going to make the district better. And not just us on our own, looking at the data, you know, it's all, it's all fact-based that we can go back and point to, it's not just pulling something out of the air.
Right.
I was sharing with Mr. Macias when we were going through this last night, one of my neighbors, the little guy, he's in, he's at Calhoun, fifth grade, he's in fifth grade. And his dad doesn't speak any English at all, and his mother speaks very little, but enough to get by. So from the time he gets out of school on Friday till he goes back on Monday, except for when he comes over to talk to me, and he comes and talks to me just to speak English. So he spends all weekend speaking Spanish. And he gets frustrated because I, I was sharing with Mr. Macias that he brings books home and he's excited about it, and he gets to read it to me in English, but his mom wants him to translate it and read it to her in Spanish. And he, you know, I, I just, I don't know what to do other than I talk to him so he can keep using his English. You know, I don't know how, how often that problem presents itself to y'all, but, you know.
All the way through high school.
He's an emergent bilingual.
If you don't mind, we can get you some extra books, so when he does go over.
Well, you remember I asked you, why did the librarian stop giving us books? Because I would always give them to him after I read them to my granddaddy. And he'd be asking me, he's like, Ms. Eaton, where's the book?
We're going to get you some.
So I buy him books now from Kohl's with the stuff down them.
Okay. All right, I'm going to move us to, I don't want to keep these ladies all night long, they've had a whole, a long day. I want to move us to the math one. So we adjusted the baseline. I think before our baseline, we had there was.
22.
22, so didn't adjust that much. And we had a goal of 55, we have a recommendation of 30. So how are we feeling? Math, we know is a little harder to move, harder to move, but want to have that same dialogue that we just had around math and see if we can get to a number, because 55 feels pretty unattainable.
So just, just to put this in context, and Sessi, check my numbers if I'm correct, in 2019, we were at 41, and that was pre-COVID. So going to 55 with knowing where we are now seems almost unattainable, to be honest.
Okay, so we have 30.
So those are my two cents.
Recommended, we had 41, you say?
It was 46% on third grade math, right? So it's 46% that meets grade level.
It was 46.
46.
46, thank you.
Well, at least that's what's on.
Yeah, on our taper.
Sorry, on 2000, sorry, 2019.
Yep, pre-pandemic.
Was 19%. And then 2020.
That's, that's the, that's the seventh grade, we're looking at third grade math.
Oh, sorry.
Third grade.
Yeah, that's the one that choked me. I couldn't understand why it went down like that, okay.
Okay, so last time you looked at a little bit of, what's the state average, pre-pandemic?
Oh, 49%.
I'm looking at 2019.
And 45 for region 20.
45 for what?
Region 20. And 49 for state.
But the state was at 49. So we were only three points behind the state pattern. And.
Okay. So we have, I don't know if you guys can even see these numbers. So we're looking at kind of a range here. We've got our recommendation by our leaders, we've got where we were, where the board originally based their, their goal on with, out, you know, and then the region and and then the region and the state. So is there somewhere in between here that we can all feel is attainable but a stretch?
What is the snapshot of this for last year? I know it didn't count, but what's the snapshot? Like, like, like we had the.
The twenty-one.
The twenty-one.
Oh, God. Oh, oh, yeah.
We're starting at twenty-one.
We're really at right now as a name. And that's a piece of report you don't have. So the data that you have. Yeah. Yeah. It's twenty-one percent at the end.
Wow. So yeah, we're asking for a big, big jump. Fairy godmother was coming.
So, and I, I guess I would ask too, like, what investments have you made into early math?
I would, I have to be honest and say not as many as we have for early literacy. And I know that a lot of the math now is reading, you know, the word problems and everything, but we have not made as big an investment. We today talked about some good strategies and investment things, but.
So we need to take that into account. We've invested in early literacy, not as much in early math. Now, that doesn't mean that there can't be investments made, right? But those take times. Investments take time to, you know, implement and to see results. So how are you feeling about a number, a target for this goal?
Well, yesterday, Ms. Canoia was, she brought up a very good point that with the math, it's more difficult to make those movements because it requires so much more, you know, it's more intense than with the literacy. So I'm inclined to, to go with the district, you know, to, to adjust my number down. So, because we were one of the groups that had the big number.
So you're inclined to go with the thirty?
Yes. Or at least, you know, thirty, thirty-five.
Does anybody feel strongly differently?
I would argue again that we should aim for pre-pandemic levels within the next five years. And which would be forty-six.
Forty-six.
And this is third grade math we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
You know, and that, that seems to be where we are. And we have our taper report that shows pre-pandemic twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. But I also have the twenty seventeen. In twenty seventeen, we were at forty-seven percent. So we've stayed between forty-seven and forty-four percent pre-pandemic.
So we haven't really grown.
Exactly. Which is, we, we need to do better. And so now we hit, took a hit this year with the pandemic and everyone has done so. So as we establish our goals, we should be able to get to where we were before pre-pandemic. And again, within five years. I'm not saying that we need to do this year over year. It is a five-year target. So we're going to see some adversity as we go through the first year, second year, third year. But clearly by year four or five, I would imagine we're, we're getting closer to that, that goal. And so I would also agree with Ms. Rodriguez, we need to make that a little bit more of a challenge, especially since we've been through forty-seven, forty-four percent pre-pandemic.
Okay. So it sounds like, and I want the rest of the board members to weigh in because everybody's voice counts in this, that we're, we're landing somewhere between thirty and forty-six. So we have the high end at forty-six. We have thirty as a recommendation. Trustee Eaton agrees with that recommendation. How, how are the rest of you? How are, that I haven't heard from? I'd love to hear from you guys.
I mean, of course, you, you want to see, this was your challenge. You want to see the best. But, you know, are you guys able to get them higher than thirty percent?
That's what we will always strive for. We will always strive to give them the best. I just, in my experience, we don't, we don't have typical challenges. Maybe three percent raise per year is still a lofty and a stretch goal, each and every time. And so we're definitely at the mercy of the board, but I just, that was why we had that recommendation.
Sure.
And, and, and it's just not a recommendation that we just pulled out of our hats.
No.
It, it comes from things that we've heard from the commissioner, things that we've read in regards to coming out of crisis and pandemics is how difficult it is. And you know really well what our kids are coming with.
And also just keep, keeping in mind that we're still looking at this, at the storm math test, which has evolved from what our summative tests have looked like in the past. In the past, our summative tests have looked like just basic arithmetic. Now it truly is a reading test. So they have to be able to master a reading test and be able to identify what it is they're asking them to solve. So it truly is a multi-step, multi-process. It's not just evaluating math, which is why our math force across the state are lower.
So. So before, pre-pandemic, the recommendation was about three percent growth. Two per, two to three percent a year, right? That's a feasible growth. If you got into five percent, you were really kind of pushing, pushing pretty hard. That was pre-pandemic. If we were to do a, a three percent growth over five years, that's fifteen points. That puts this number at a thirty-six, which is not the forty-six that we had before. I, I grant it. It's not the thirty that we walked in with. So do we feel that's a stretch? Not enough a stretch? What, uh, how are you feeling? Yeah, I haven't heard from you tonight.
Right. And I was just going to say, you know, my, my input is that I, I want us to be realistic. I do want it to be feasible. And if our leaders recommend what would be somewhere between thirty, thirty-five percent, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Trustee Diaz?
My, my main concern is that it's realistic. I think that's the way we're looking at it.
Yeah, that's the same with me as well. You know, it has to be feasible.
Right.
It's, it's a lot going on right now. I just want to make sure that they're able to get, you know, reach that goal though. And I know, I know that it's not the best, of course, but is it feasible during this time? There's a lot going on.
So it's a tension between feasible and challenging because we want adult behavior change. We want to create change. We want to say, you're going to have to create some new strategies, right? That's what you guys are doing, are pushing. Hadn't heard from you tonight. Trustee Diaz? Thoughts? Not to put you on the.
Can y'all get to thirty?
That's the most reasonable one is to get to, to try to get to thirty.
If you can get to thirty.
I mean, isn't pushing. Yeah, it's not going to be easy to get to thirty.
It's still lofty.
And the other thing is, Mr. Diaz, is that the strategies, the strategies that, that were put in place for literacy, there's not the same type of strategies for math. So that's another thing, that's another challenge, is putting in math strategies that are going to be accessible to the thirty percent.
So here's where I'm struggling with. I guess that, that was one of my questions. Can you get to thirty? The answer is like, yeah, I don't want to see it. I feel like it's not a good place to start, right? So I'm, I'm, can you get to thirty?
It's not going to be easy to get to thirty.
If you can get to thirty, you're confident you can get to thirty.
No.
So here's the thing about math and about reading. At, at, once they master that basic phonemic awareness, decoding kind of thing, you do the same thing over and over at a higher reading level. Math is completely different because there are discrete skills and concepts that are taught at every grade level. And if you miss out on that, then there has to be backfilling that has to be done before they can build on it. This last year and this year, we have kids going in and out, in and out for lots of reasons. Virtual did not work for every kid. I don't know how you can do concrete.
Manipulatives.
When they're on the other side of a computer at these low grades. So we are going to have a lot of work to do to backfill and get them back to a pre-pandemic level. And that is probably, I would think, going to take more than the five years to get back there just because of the nature of the beast. And so I'm very reluctant to set a really high goal in math knowing how it works.
I would agree if it was any other grade but third grade. For seventh grade, like, I'm not going to push hard on that one. But like for third grade, those kids are literally entering school right now. And they're in person. And so they.
Some of them are, but they're, but they're still, so many of them are having to go home in quarantine and, and we're not doing virtual for them now. They're going to have to do a packet of work, you know?
And we have to expect that kids in, in kindergarten, when, like, that's all we can expect. If the kids start in kindergarten with us, if we get pre-K, that's bonus time, you know? Um, and so.
Well, first grade actually, because a lot of them are keeping kinder home.
But that's next year's problem.
But it, but it, but it affects.
I feel like thirty is really, really low.
That's, that's where I'm at. Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at, right? I'm actually even more saddened that we're in this position to even remove COVID from the situation after how they are and that they have a good monitor. I gotta say that as a parent, right? So.
That the board hasn't monitored it because the district has.
That the board has. This all over, right? All of us. So I'm actually super disheartened, right? Because we've put ourselves in a position where if we will fall off, the whole bar is like jammed.
So can I put it in perspective? I'm looking at numbers from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty at our districts that are, are comparable districts that are around them. Okay. So if you look around at our comparable districts, we were at forty-six, they were at forty-seven. This is pre-COVID. So putting that number in perspective, that if the districts that we're competing against, that we're measuring ourselves against, which we don't really supposed to, but we do it anyway, and what parents are looking at, they were at forty-seven percent in third grade math pre-COVID. So when you talk about the differences between reading and math, it's a different ballgame when you come to math. And then you add on top of that the fact that it's a reading test now. So we have kids sitting in campus right now that are going to struggle not only with just math, they're going to struggle with reading and it's going to have a bigger impact on math than it is reading. Because we're not only looking at can you read the problem, but can you solve?
Do computation as well.
Do the computation as well. So the math issue is not just a Jutzen ISD issue, it is a statewide issue because even the state was only at forty-nine percent in third grade math. And when you change the test, when you add reading component and when you add stimulus to the test, kids have to be taught how to read charts as well as how to read word problems.
Thank you for bringing it.
At eight years old.
I'd like to let Ms. Eaton go before I make my comment because she has been waiting.
Well, I.
She was waving at me and I missed her. Sorry.
What I was looking at, no, 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 um, is that, you know, we had a greater than fifty percent decrease because of this current situation. Because we went all the way down, well, our hypothetical number there is the twenty-one percent. So we had a greater than fifty percent decrease because we were at forty-five post-pandemic. So I, I can see where it is going to take us time to get back, at least get back to where we were. So my question is, what can we do? What, what can we, what assistance can we give for additional programs, people? What can we do as a board to help us get on back up there, you know? Because the bottom line is we, we have to get them back up there. So, because, you know, we can keep talking about drop, the fall, the difference. But what can we do to solve the problem?
Let's get.
And we are, and we are going to be bringing some in October.
And, yeah.
Okay. So let's get a goal on the books and we're going to, then we're going to get those strategies underneath it so that we're going to be.
I, I think that, you know, when, for me, and especially last night, because I think I was a lot more quiet last night, it is really hard to say thirty percent. You know, it is really hard to, to say that. Because then whose child am I letting fail? Your child, your child? You know, it's like, you know, so it, it's, it's really hard. I think that what I can definitely agree to, but it is, it is, it is a lofty, hard goal. But I will agree to the thirty-five if the board could agree to the thirty-five.
And I think, I think to your point, and it's important to state this too, not that you don't all know this, but we're always striving for a hundred percent. They're always striving for a hundred percent. You all absolutely want a hundred percent. But we know if we set that hundred percent goal, we're not going to hit that in five years, right? So let's set some tangible goals that we can actually build strategies towards. Next five years, we go, you know, even higher, right? Now we got systems in place. So I think that's important. So we've got thirty-five that the district feels like they could, that that's a reach, it's a stretch. We're stretching them. We're poking them, poking them. How does the board feel about that? That's closer to the three percent each year for five years. We know we're not going to get three percent probably this year, right? Because we're still adjusting. So there's going to have to be bigger growth in the later years.
Right. And, and that's what actually stresses me out, you know, because I think of, there isn't going to be a lot because of, I know what's going on, you know, with the kids. I see so many absences. I see, and, and there's nothing we can really do because I don't want them to come to school sick either. The teachers are sick, the teacher shortage, all of those things. I'm thinking then that makes like for five, six percent growth all the years after this, which is really, really a stretch.
So I have thirty-five. You guys were our, our stretchers. So how are you feeling after this dialogue about that number? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that you're happy with the number. Can we live with it?
My number was forty-six, going back to pre-pandemic levels. Because the kids that, again, and like, and I, I'm not going to like be the one to hold this all up, but like, again, the kids who are going to contribute to that in the year twenty twenty-six, some of them have not entered school and wouldn't have entered school whether there was a pandemic or not. Right? They are four years old right now. And so we have the potential to reset with that particular group in a way that is not going to be reflected in the rest of the kids that coming up. I, that, that might not, like, I think we have the potential to like see a big jump doing exactly what we've done for every year leading up before the pandemic. Like, we just need to do what we've done and.
But we didn't see those jumps in the years before the pandemic.
No, it's not jumps. I'm not talking about jumps. I'm saying like giving the kids the education from kindergarten through third grade that we have given kids in kindergarten through third grade for however long our district has existed. And we have gotten those results. That's, that's the logic in my brain that is not being overcome yet.
Can I bring up one more point? We're going to be asking our teachers to focus in two areas with new strategies and new things to attempt to do because let's face it, our pre-K through third grade generally are self-contained classrooms. The kids don't switch out. So I'm the teacher, I'm teaching reading and I'm teaching math. So now I'm coming in with new strategies I have to learn to teach my kids and focus on for reading and a whole nother set of strategies I have to focus on and learn for math. Not to mention I still have to do writing, I still have to do social studies, I still have to do science. Got to fit art in there somewhere because we don't have art teachers. So computer skills, let's don't forget that. So what are we doing to the teachers too to make it attainable for our staff and not overwhelming for our staff? So I just want to point that out too. It's not like we're only looking at the seventh grade math teachers. That's different. They've got one subject to focus on. Our elementary teachers focus on way more than one.
So would our investment reflect that reality for those educators? I mean, I guess, would it is?
There is support there, but how many trains can I go to and come back and implement and do it effectively?
Is that one of our questions, I don't, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I don't-
Is that the only level?
Is training the only lever?
No, no.
I think that's, that has to, that has to drive the goal, right? Which is, yes, under, under current circumstances, with current conditions, unattained. However, because of this, there has to be little levers to get forward. We just have to be told what we are.
Well, and, to your point, I mean, look, there are, there is, we could be doing the same thing that we've been doing. Or we could say, that ain't working? There are strategies, there are strategies, ACE strategies, other strategies that do move kids faster. They cost money. They're harder to implement. So I guess that's my point, too. If we set a goal at a much higher level, then there's gonna have to be structural changes that may cost a lot of money. May, I mean, we have seen success in that area in third grade, with putting, you know, our, our best teachers in front of our kids who need it. Paying our teachers more for that duty, doing, oh, there's a lot of strategies around there. I'm not, I'm not the expert, so I wouldn't dictate what those strategies were, but you're-
And it's also not just third grade teachers that we're looking at. We have to look at what's happening in kinder, what's happening in first grade, what's happening in second grade, so that we can build-
Build, it's a continuum.
So that when they get to third grade, then they are at this level.
Absolutely.
You know, so then it's also a deployment for the district, which is about professional development and things like that, and it's challenging.
It's a student achievement goal.
Right.
Right? We're focusing on student achievement. The strategies, the inputs to get there-
Right.
Belong to these guys, right? So what we're focused on in this room is, what is the goal that gives them? Cre- what are we doing? We're setting a goal, and then how are we creating the conditions for success, right? So if you give them a goal that we, they can't reach, then we're not creating, we've didn't, then we own it. We own the failure. So that's all I'm saying, is when we think about this, we have to think about what that goal is. But it's not your job to worry necessarily, except to resource it, is how we get there. You're saying, we need you to get here, tell us what you need to get here, right? So I'm just saying, when we look at these, this gap, because right now we're at a ten-point gap. Ten points is three years at three percent. It's a big gap, it's a big gap between where we are and where we need to be.
My, my assessment is similar to Ms. Rodriguez. If we've been there before, we should be able to get there again within five years. I know, year over year is gonna be difficult, and I've stated that, two years will be difficult, three. But Ms. Rodriguez's point of these students being new, going through our process, is, is I think very appropriate. So, we, we shouldn't lower our targets. Our community expects us to produce excellence. As a board member, I expect us to produce excellence. And as a result, because this group is unique, where they're starting in kinder first, and we're already putting resources out there, I think it's, we can expect to see at least the same growth we saw twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen. I, I don't think that's too far, I don't know if there's, uh, again, since I'm not in the trenches, and I'm not in that area, I don't know where the barrier, I, I would ask the question, um, not why we can't get there, but how can we get there, period? And as Ms. Eaton said, if it requires resources, propose those resources that, I mean, is viable. It could even be a classroom aide in every classroom, two classroom aides in every classroom. We need to be able to put the investment forward to make this a reality. And I've never had anyone in the community tell me, darn it, my kid's so educated, you spend too much money on him. They will support that effort if it makes sense. We have a lot of ESSR funds, which again, are to help us get our kids to grade level. So we have an influx of cash that is supposed to be utilized for this. And so, I just, I just can't see why we can't at least get to pre-pandemic. I'm, I'm, it's hard to even say we're not striving for more, but get there first, and then move forward.
Okay, so let's do this, because I feel like we're, we're kind of in an impasse on this one, but we're gonna come, I'm not, we're gonna come back to it, we're gonna go to the next one. We're gonna go to the CCMR one, and see if we, uh, if we have some, some space in there. So, we're tabling it, I'm taking what you guys, you know, we're gonna keep this conversation, but let's, just in case we can move forward, let's try the CCMR. So CCMR was at fifty percent, uh, or that's where it was, that's the twenty, twenty-one numbers. Correct?
Yes.
And we had a twenty-five point gain, percentage point gain, and the district is recommending a fifteen percent gain, which is three percent each year. And so I, I know you guys had some thought process behind that, so I'd love to hear, you share that with the board, please.
So, one of the things that I didn't know yesterday is that the indicators for CCMR has changed. So knowing that part, that, that's also a little worrisome.
We have, I have slides on that, if you, if it's helpful.
So tip, before CCMR would, would count, we would get a half a point for students that were in the coherent sequence for CTE. And so that would bump us up a little bit, because we're a, a huge district for CTE, all of our college, I mean, career technology courses, and we have pathways and programs of studies at every, every high school. And we really start trying to get the kids enrolled in CTE as, as an eighth grader, and then continue that progress. So it wasn't hard for us to get that, the state has removed that. So we will no longer get that extra half a point for every kid that's enrolled in the CTE course coherently. The other thing that's been taken off the table is military. So we got, we got points for every kid that enlisted in the military, it's part of CCMR. So we also have the college part of it, which is the ACT, SAT, uh, AP classes, IB, dual credit, all of that. But in addition, we would get an extra bump, because we were so big in our CTE program here in Judson. And then we do, we're a college, we are a military community, so a lot of our kids would enlist, um, during their senior year. So those two pieces have been removed by the state, because the military is waiting to give us their ruling on how we can count that. And so right now, so we can't, we're not gonna be able to use that for our accountability this year, those two pieces. So that's going to be huge for us.
So that's gonna make those-
But that was included on this, right? On the fifty percent, so, for now-
I can give you, I have a quick handout. Is that okay, Dr. Hart?
Yes, of course, I'm, I'm sorry.
And Ms., Dr. DuHart, if, if, um, that same Tito that decides that they're gonna join the military, that we can't count, but they've registered for the Alamo Promise, to say they're gonna go and do a career or college, would it count as a college enrollment at that time?
It will count if they meet the TSI, TSI requirements-
Okay.
For them to go into Alamo Promise. Because even though we're doing, thank you, even though we're doing Alamo Promise as a district, and we are wholeheartedly encouraging all of our kids to go that route, and I'm so glad about veterans being added this year.
Same here.
Um, the kids have to meet the TSI requirement. And so, yes, if they meet the TSI requirement, they can count in that area. If they take an AP course and they get a score of three or higher, they can be counted, that can count. That, that CTE just gave us a, a little bit of a bump.
Um, this, so we got a one piece, Dr. DuHart, in our folder that was for twenty twenty-one. We had already, so I noticed that USR courses was not included there.
Right.
And then, um, we have the industry-based certificate, that's the certificate, not just the course sequence, correct?
Yes.
So the fifty is the correct baseline?
So what we, the industry certifications, or the industry certificates, we, all of our kids that are in a program of study, we wanna push them, when they graduate, we want them leaving with, with the industry certification.
Right.
What the CTE coherent sequence was, that if I started a level one course, I'm gonna go to level two, and I'm gonna go to level three, and then level four, in that program of study, because we would want the kids to get to the practicum level, where they would get that certificate. So if the kid, who was helping us with the CTE sequence, that even if they didn't get that certificate, even though we tried to push you towards the certificate, even if you didn't get the certificate, we still got points for you, if you stayed in the sequence of the courses.
But that, just to clarify, and you mean, you probably, I don't know-
I don't have this much shooting on me, I'm looking at it.
So is that, I'm just curious, like, to get to the fifty percent baseline, which is what we understood to be our starting point? I see the military is already not in there. Um, is the, the, the category is industry-based certifications, is that correctly counted? Or is that using the old criteria?
So the industry certification is counted separately, so it is, it is gonna be part of the CCMR.
Got it. So the fifty, I, I guess my ultimate question is, is the fifty percent starting point correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on this year.
The new criteria, okay.
This year's criteria.
And, and you said it's being reviewed in court?
And this is preliminary, right?
I think what it is, is the military doesn't want us to necessarily meet the district, who's been in, who's actually enlisted or not.
It was always very tricky-
Yes.
To see what they would allow us to count. So sometimes, it would, when the wording first said, is intent.
To enlist.
So some districts use that to their favor, and said, even if I just said, oh, I think I'm gonna go and never win?
They counted them.
Some districts checked that.
Well, they took the ASFAB, but it's like, never, yeah.
And they never, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then a district can say, give the ASFAB to every single kid, and then it's all CCMR, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I only ask, because if we reduce that target, because this information is, is, um, it would impact that, would we then change it if the court's ruled in a certain way that we can incorporate military, and the intent is acceptable? Then we would have to revise that number based on that new information.
If we, if we were to get an update as to new CCMR guidelines, I would definitely want the board to look at it again. And see.
But right now, we don't know when that update, that we're gonna, they're not, military's not.
Okay. So given that information, are we, are you guys good with fifty to sixty-five? Or, you have, I see a nod. Fifty to sixty-five, are you holding on seventy-five, where are you feeling? Their recommendation is sixty-five.
I'm curious as to where we have the most influence on this, just like, you know, SAT, it's really-
I think it's really CTE.
The CTE.
It's the CTE courses, mm-hmm.
How much of a jump might we expect to see there, if we start pushing, okay, right now we, we know that the criteria have adjusted, how many more kids might we expect to pick up in, by having, like, saying, hey, it's your advantage to like, finish the certificate?
Yeah, that's the question.
Or how many kids did we have enrolled in the courses that were not getting a certificate? Is maybe my question, a question that would help me.
How, the question was, how many kids?
How many kids, when we have gotten the credit for, for just enrolling in the courses? Like, how many kids might we move from like, not finishing the certificate to finishing the certificate? Because they were like, in the right sequence of courses, but just didn't finish it.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't-
I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, we don't, we don't know what we were at in twenty nineteen? Well, that, because that also had the military in it.
No, in twenty nineteen, we do know where we were at, fifty-six.
We were at fifty-six, okay.
And at twenty twenty, we were at sixty-eight point five.
And that included military, or?
Yes, yes.
And we were at sixty-eight point five in twenty twenty.
And coherent sequence.
And coherent, with those two.
Where were you at eighteen?
Twenty eighteen?
But it sounds like the twenty twenty number might be a better indicator, because that didn't include military, but did include coherent sequence, and we were at sixty-eight.
It, it did not include coherent sequence.
And I wanted to see what the growth was between eighteen and nineteen?
Got it.
As a, kind of a normal, without changing stuff? Because those were the same criteria both years, right? Eighteen and nineteen.
Eighteen and nineteen, yeah.
So in twenty eighteen, wow, at twenty eighteen, we were at thirty-eight percent.
Thirty-eight, and we went to what in twenty nineteen? Forty-one?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six? So we went thirty-eight to fifty-six?
But that was some strategic strategy that were put in place at every high school.
Don't apologize for success.
No, I never apologized for success, but I know what we did, and I know we can do it again. But however, this is where my concern is, this year, is the fact that a lot of our students did not attend school. A lot of them were not engaged. So if I'm coming in after sitting at home for the last almost eighteen months, I'm not going to, going to be where I should be. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so, me getting to an industry certification, which is one of the, the indicators there, I may not be able to get to that level, because now I'm having to recoup what I lost. So if I failed all, four out of five of my, my classes last year, four out of my five core classes, then I'm not on the pathway to get, does that make sense?
That certification, yeah.
Yes.
But can I ask you this, this question? If you deployed a strategy to get from here to here, now I'm not saying that that would happen next year, because you're right, there's so many things that were lost. But could you get from, could you deploy similar strategies to get there in five years? Because that's a-
This year's current.
What is that? Somebody add, twenty-four per, point?
This year's current eighth graders. In five years, we're looking at.
It's just-
Four years, we're looking at this year.
Not making any commit to it, just add.
Five years, this year's current eighth graders.
Looks like our, our, when we came up with last night is a little west.
Was the strategy that was employed, one that had to do with the coherence? Or military?
It was a lot of things. We, uh, we did a concentrated effort to get all of our, our seniors TSI tested and ready. So that, that strategy's still in place. So we, we try to push every kid to sit for the TS exam, TSI exam, and pass it. Um, enrollment in dual credit courses, we put a strategy in place for that, to try to encourage kids, that even the kids that would never even think about taking dual credit, trying to move them, um, in that area. Every CTE course is working towards industry certification.
So I'm trying to think of what it is differently that we could do.
And ONRANs is not really-
That it's not still continuing from that push.
Right.
We're doing more with ONRANs, I know that.
We are offering more courses with ONRANs.
I mean, we've talked about offering different CTE things that is, that, um, interest the kids. So we've been talking about, but this isn't something that we could do this quickly, it's gonna take some years.
Right, this is gonna take two years.
You know, we've been talking about, there's a huge need for underwater welding. We've been talking about the firefighter program. So we have some ideas, you know, in place.
That will lead to industry certification.
How many sequences, how many years of sequential coursework does it take to get most certification?
Three.
Three, okay. So we would have at least two years to like, get it in place, if we were, if we were gonna add like, the firefighter program, that it would still impact the last year of it, okay? And I'm not like, trying to get, like, win an, an argument here, or like, get to seventy-five or something, I hope it's not coming up. I'm just, I like, A, I geek out on this stuff, so I like, really like to understand the details, but like, um, yeah. And it is harder with older students, right? Like, today, eighth graders are like, wow, their whole middle school experience has been like-
Jacked up.
They haven't been in school since sixth grade.
And there's like, almost no surprise, you know? So, we've lost a lot of kids like that.
When we look at sixty-five, I mean, it's, it's a, it's growth. It's significant growth from where, even from post, pre-pandemic, it's still significant growth. So, somewhere in between here and here, we have, we need to set. So somewhere in between here and here, we have, we need to set.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with, like, straight between seventy, I even, like, I can see the logic behind, behind the sixty-five. This feels like more, because it is harder, it's, it's a different kind of tweaking that takes a long-term plan to get there, you know? And so, yeah.
There's a lot of different factors that make up that number.
What was the twenty twenty number you said again?
Twenty twenty was.
Fifty.
Fifty.
So we were at fifty in twenty twenty and fifty in twenty twenty one.
Fifty, at twenty twenty one, and then what was the other one you said?
Twenty twenty, the last year.
We don't, I don't have that.
I have it, hold on.
Because I thought, because that was, like.
Fifty, I said two thousand nineteen was fifty-six.
Twenty twenty was sixty-eight point five.
Sixty-eight.
No, it wasn't, that was twenty nineteen.
Twenty twenty carried over the exact same.
Same number.
As twenty nineteen, because there was no star testing on twenty twenty.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So they're the exact same CTE course.
They didn't calculate the CCMR stuff. Because I was down fifty-six for twenty nineteen.
So twenty nineteen was fifty-six.
So we got thirty-eight, fifty-six, fifty-six, fifty. Is that what we're talking about for the last four years? Thirty-eight, fifty-six, fifty-six, fifty?
Mm-hmm, fifty-six was twenty nineteen. Yeah, and then fifty is where we are calculating for twenty twenty-one right now.
See, that's where, those are the last four years.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. So many numbers.
So thirty, you what?
She said so many numbers.
So there's eighteen points to our growth, our biggest growth is eighteen points. We're looking at, uh, fifteen points to sixteen, sixty-five, we could strive for another eighteen-point growth spurt and call it sixty-eight.
Yeah, I'm down with sixty-eight.
How are we feeling over here on this side of the room with sixty-eight?
That's fine.
I'm still at that.
You're still what?
I'm still at that sixty-five.
Because there's not as many.
There's not as many things to implement to make those increases.
Okay. Sixty-eight, sixty-eight, sixty-five. What one?
Sixty.
Sixty-five.
What was the number, Jen?
Sixty-five or sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight.
I'm assuming sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight?
I'm so stressed.
Or sixty-five?
I'm just sitting here.
You have a number?
Oh, Mike, I'm, I'm down with.
Yes.
Okay, and you?
What's here, I mean, we've done.
Okay, so we're gonna go with the sixty-eight number. These are all preliminary still.
Parker's gonna hate me. No, I'm not, I'm not. No, I'm, I'm stretching, I'm stretching, okay, I'm stretching.
So we're gonna, we're gonna pause here, we've got dinner, dinner ready, but before we do that, I just want to say that. I mean, this conversation, I know it's uncomfortable, and it's hard, and it's uncomfortable for everyone. It is a great conversation to have, because we're talking about students, we're talking about outcomes, we're setting goals, we're doing amazing board work, amazing board work, right here, so.
I, I do have to echo that, I, I, I really do, because I know that it's hard for me, so I know it's hard for y'all too, because y'all want the very best for our kids. So I do appreciate the honesty from all of you, the transparency, I, I really do. It, it's not, it's not taken as a joke, it, it really isn't.
Good. So you want to take a break, fifteen minutes for dinner?
Yes.
Or do you want to keep slogging through this?
Oh, we gotta wait. Betty had to go get something. Go one more, do one more, I think.
Do one more.
Sorry.
Do one more. Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Okay, let's take a break, everybody's hungry, sorry. Okay, take a break, I'm so sorry.
Everybody was like, we need a break, we're boycotting. All right, go, let's do, it doesn't matter, we'll just.
Let's take a break.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
We had to adjust the baseline, we didn't have the right data for the baseline, I didn't give you guys the right data for the baseline. So it's at five percent is where we are right now. And you had set a goal at thirty-six percent. And what was the recommendation, I'm sorry, for the, from the district? Seventh grade math?
Thirty-six was the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, okay.
We were, we were playing fifty percent, fifty-two percent for seventh grade math.
You were at, yeah, I got it over here, seventh grade. I have a. Fifty-two, is that where you were?
Fifty, fifty-two, yeah, we're playing with that.
Okay, so we were at fifty-two. Does this sound right?
No.
Thirty-six was your recommendation?
No.
No, that was actually the one that we talked about, because it is so low, about moving it to approaches instead.
That's right. Okay, so you want to talk about that, and let's, let's, so these were at meets.
Just giving a little bit of context behind that five percent at meets, right? Um, our seventh grade here, our seventh grade students who choose to enroll in pre-AP or GT classes are actually placed in eighth grade. So when you're looking at seventh grade, you're just looking at seventh grade students who are on level or below grade level. And so when you're looking at the approaches for this past school year that just happened twenty twenty-one, we're at twenty-seven percent. And so when you have that number of students who pass twenty-seven percent, I wonder if our target and our goal should be to focus on getting all of our students to experience the success of passing. In line with all of the additional district-wide changes that we would need to consider as far as the pathways that we've selected for our students. Knowing, of course, that tier-one instruction is always a goal for them.
So the recommendation, so we had talked about this a little bit last night, too. You guys definitely wanted a middle school goal, right? You were concerned with middle school math, specifically seventh grade. Because we talked about eighth grade, and you know, if they take, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're taking, um, Algebra I, that doesn't count in any kind of star testing, right? For, so seventh grade, what are the kids that are taking the math test?
In seventh grade, the only kids taking seventh grade math at star are the kids enrolled in on level, or what they would call regular, right?
Right, okay. So that's what we're measuring. And so your suggestion is that you recognize that there's a challenge here.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And, you know, should we set a goal at the approaches level, so that we can focus on getting kids to the bar? And then hopefully, that's also gonna push kids over the bar. As opposed to focusing in on growing this number, especially growing this number into this range, which may be very difficult in five years.
So a couple of clear, tiny questions. The kids who are, um, seventh graders who are enrolled in eighth grade level math, take the eighth grade star test, or?
Yes, they would.
Okay. And what pers, how, what's the breakdown? Like, what percentage of kids is taking seventh grade math, and what percentage of kids is taking eighth grade math?
That are enrolled in seventh grade and have to, that would have to be sometimes.
Okay. Do you have a rough estimate, or it's, yes, no idea? I'm just curious, so.
I would say maybe twenty percent.
Twenty percent, that's about.
Okay. Twenty percent of the seventh grade and every middle school.
So the top twenty percent, more or less, is seventh graders that are taking the eighth grade? Okay.
So they're not included in this data?
Right, they're in the eighth grade data, which we.
And I imagine then, are the, the lower twenty percent are not taking this as well, or they're taking?
No, they are, they will be enrolled in a seventh grade.
They are taking seventh grade math, okay.
Be everybody but a creative.
Everybody but creative and GT are in seventh grade.
Okay, so eighty percent of the students in seventh grade are included in this measurement. Correct?
Yes, approximately. Sorry, can you repeat that question?
Eighty percent of seventh graders are included in these measurements, both the meets or the approaches.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So twenty-seven percent of that eighty percent is at approaches right now, and five percent are at meets. So the, what they're asking is, could we switch this goal? Read, it would read the exact same thing, only it would be, instead of meets grade level or above, it would be approaches grade level or above. And it would be from twenty-seven percent to X.
So tell me again, why you prefer the approach versus the.
I, go ahead, Ceci, no, 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 no. I think on this. No, let's both tell our sides, let's both, I can only speak for myself, and then Ceci, you please speak. I think for me, because that is so, it's so low, that I want to make as many gains for the stu, student sakes. And the best way to do that is at approaches, so they can then have success, and then work them up to the meets part.
You're not doing it nicely. If our goal is meets, it doesn't mean that you could see that you're gonna suit.
No, absolutely not. So I, I guess I see it as a stepping stone, let me get them to the approaches first, and then I can work to get them to the meets. And that, making that more attainable and real.
Because it's actually, I can see a world in which it's more rigorous, actually, if they're gonna hit meets at seventh grade, then maybe they should be in the eighth grade math and have the opportunity to be on a more accelerated math track than in college prep.
It feels like too, to your point, that there's gonna be more kids to work with. Well, we're gonna, obviously, all kids will get worked with, but more kids are gonna be in this range than pushing them from here to here.
But Ceci, what were you gonna recommend?
Well, my perspective is, is you were going to leave the recommendation that I, that I see here at thirty-six percent, knowing that we were at twenty-seven percent, I was going to say, then let's move it to approaches. We can similarly go to meets and still apply that two to three percent rule, um, per year, and then leave it at meets, and maybe go to a fifty percent meet. If you want it, if you wanted to use meets as your ceiling or your, your goal to reach.
So the reason that we make recommendations at meets is because if kids are at meets, then we feel like they're, the chances of them being successful in the next grade are very high. If they are at approaches, they go into the next grade, but they still need significant intervention to be successful. So the reason, that's the reason that, for us, when we started to talk about these goals, we sat at meets, because that is, means that we, we know that these kids are gonna move into the next grade level with high chances of success.
Or you could consider this a growth goal, because this would be the one goal where you can look at growth, because they've taken a sixth grade math. So we can set a goal of certain percentage of students that reached that growth. That every student grew, that every student reached a one-year growth. Right now, we don't have that, because obviously, we didn't have the star last year. But that could be different kids that are continuing to just focus on that growth. Especially when you know that there's a lot of growth that needs to happen here, um, as we continue to focus on tier one.
And I guess for me, it's looking at it from the standpoint that if we had eight hundred students in seventh grade, only twenty-seven percent of that eight hundred got to approaches, passed. And so I, I can understand the need to, if we were gonna rewrite the goal, rewrite the goal at approach. Because typically, your approaches is in the seventy percent tolerance, and we're talking twenty-seven percent.
Right, right, right.
Where were the numbers last year on both meets and approaches?
Approaches, um, meets, five.
Need to pay some attention to. So I think what, what we're trying to figure, and, you know, this is where I'm gonna have to defer to, to the experts in the room, is, you know, the, the difference between, you know, if we focus on strategies to move kids from approaches to meets, are those strategies different than moving kids? Okay. So those are different strategies. So that's a, that's where I would see a reason to have an approaches goal as opposed to a meets goal. Do you see what I'm saying? If the strategies are gonna be different, that you're gonna deploy, then, then there's a reason to have those approach, that approaches goal. If the strategies are the same, there's really not a very, you know, or you go with the growth goal, which you could say. Those are harder to calculate, right? Because now we have to say, X number of students will grow X percentage across all objectives, right? So, and you're already doing that, you're already measuring, so you know where kids are, right? You know, um, it's harder for the board to set a goal around that growth.
If, if we look at the approaches grade level, then we're looking more at tier-one instruction, which is, you know, what they get every single day in the classroom. And from what I'm seeing, it sounds like that's where we need to make the changes, is that what is happening every day in the classroom in terms of, of good instruction, catching kids that are lower, and, and, you know, targeting them with RTI to build them up to that, rather than taking a group of, you know, five percent of kids who are already at, you know, at grade level, and trying to, to move them from so far down below to, that wasn't coherent. I think you, I think you, we're gonna affect more kids if we look at an approaches grade level for this particular one, because the lack of success is not there.
And when you think about the strategy, so let me try it, if I can phrase it a little better.
Yeah, phrase it better than, than I did.
So tier-one, clearly, the indication here, needs to be supported. It needs to be strengthened. So when we're talking about the only twenty-seven percent actually even met approaches, then you're really thinking from a teacher's perspective that we need to strengthen the tier-one instruction so that all our students can experience success. That's the reason to focus on the approaches, just so that they can meet what the standard would find as minimal success, right? If we focus on meets, which, um, Ms. Rodriguez always said, that's, then on top of that, a different set of strategies to go deeper, now we're going to try and, and do two things at once, while we're not, when we know that first, we need to build this foundation well, because we knew that is essential.
Okay, so I, I hear what you're saying, and I want to make sure that we're clear with the board. So when we think about this, if twenty-seven plus five percent is thirty-two percent, that means sixty-eight percent of the eighty percent who are taking seventh grade math are not, are in, did not meet grade level.
Yes.
So tier-one instruction that you're talking about addresses those children as well. So those, so the focus is on those sixty-eight percent, getting them to approaches. And so when we, when we set an approaches goal, now we're hitting the majority of the kids in seventh grade, which is, who are not at approaches. So with that strategy in mind, setting an approaches goal says, we're gonna, we're gonna not hurt, you know, we're not ignoring these kids that are at meets, but we are taking a whole lot of kids who aren't, who aren't at grade level, who aren't even getting at grade level, and we're gonna move them with the strategies that we deploy. Is that, did I put that in the right way?
I think that's definitely what it is.
Okay. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
So I have one more question, though, before I go all in.
No, absolutely.
Our historical data show. Our historical data shows that we have an, we have a problem with meet approaches for the last few years, not just pandemic related, but pre-pandemic. That's what I thought I was reading, but.
Well, pre-pandemic for approaches at seventh grade math, we were at 55. In 2019, it was 53 and 2018.
And 15 and 27.
So say that 2017 was 50 approaches?
Approaches.
Then 53, then 55. So we went up about 2%, 3% each year.
Say then again, 2017, what was that?
50.
50% approaches.
And then 53 and then 55.
When did we start, has, have we been doing this, like placing seventh graders in eighth grade math for a long time?
Yes.
I taught this for a while.
Well, I can speak with it for any half years.
And I taught middle school and yes, that was the, that was the.
So at least going back to 2018, we'd worked on it then.
And then somewhere in that times frame, timeframe, you have to also realize that the tees changed for math. And so that played a role in what we're looking at too, as far as the data and the performance of students.
So I guess we have two questions on the table. The one is, do we want to go with approaches or do we want to go with meets? And then the second one will be where do we want the target to be? So we've kind of heard some arguments for the approaches. Does anybody have a significant argument that they want to go with for meets?
What is the approaches goal?
I'm sorry?
What is the approaches goal?
We haven't set a goal yet.
So that, that would be, I mean, I would like to look at what that would look like to make a decision on which one to, to choose.
So right now, at meets, we're starting at 5%. At approaches, we're starting at 27%.
And in 2019, just to make sure I'm thinking, we were at 19% to 2019, is correct, for the meets?
Yes.
Okay.
At meets.
And we were approaches at 53%?
55%, I think, if I could read my writing.
2019 is 55.
Okay. Good, just want to make sure I have that in my head right. Go ahead.
So a target here, if we were to go with a 3% a year growth, would put it at 20. Just throwing a number out here right now. If this one, it would put it at, somebody help me with math, because clearly, this is a math goal and I. So 15 and 17 is 33? 42. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Doesn't look right. All right, so those would be, you know, 15-point gains over five years. 3, 3% a year. We didn't make those kind of gains here on either one. So, and that's three years. So we are, I mean, to me, if this is the trend line, we're going to have to make stradi, uh, significant changes to behavior, adult behavior, to get to a 15% gain. So that's to me, a very, that's a stretch, right? Comparative to what we've done in the three years prior to that, at either level. So these may be too stretched. They may be too stretched. So I just based it, I just wanted to get us at a starting point. So either way, we're moving. This means we're getting this many more kids ready to go to the next grade level, but they're not going to be out of the woods. They're still going to have, you know, need intervention in eighth grade. This way, we have a much smaller number of kids that we're preparing for eighth grade that should have the best chance. So I think what the, what we've heard here, the argument for approaches is that we have a different style of instruction. It could be, that is a strategy that can deploy, that'll reach more kids. That's what, that's what I heard.
And I would have to agree with that, the approaches level.
Okay, so you, you're for the approaches level. I don't know if that gives you the information you wanted to make that decision, but.
I'm still processing and looking at what that is. My, and the same thing that's been said in our earlier goals. If, if we're not even looking at pre-pandemic to be sort of the baseline, then I think we're failing our community. We need to look at what we have done in the past. This one is unique because it's probably the worst one we have. Which means we need to up our game here because there is consistency in, in negative numbers for us. So it requires a different effort, a different approach. Monitoring is fine. We could even say we'll monitor it every year for approaches, up to the five years. But I just don't want to end up below where we were before. And that is what you're putting on there right now. That's the trend you're having us. We're not even, if we do the approaches at 42 and we're at 55 when we had the last assessment, and this is over five years, mind you. I'm not even going to be on the board five years from now. So the thing is, we, we need to set a better tone and an expectation and it's important.
So the selection of either meets or approaches would dictate our focus, which then dictates our investment. Is that right?
Say it one more time.
So the selection of meets or approaches would dictate our focus and set the tone for our investment.
It would set the tone for their strategies that they would deploy and come back with you and give you, either ask you for resources, but also giving you progress monitoring around that.
And the strategies to get measurable gains from approaches to meets are materially different than those from did not meet grade level to approaches? They're distinct, separate, there is no overlap.
No. I would say there is, in the sense that first, the teacher needs to master how to even get kids, how to even get kids to the approaches level first, right? Based on our data, that hasn't been mastered yet. And so we can say we want to even move meets up higher, but you can't even get or reach meets unless you reach approaches first. So kids won't even stand a chance to, to give us a percentage point in meets if they haven't even approached, if they haven't even passed. So when you look at that, how are we going to move the needle and increase the percentage by 15 points? Well, we need to increase our percentage to get our kids to pass. And hopefully beyond passing, so that they can even be in the needle under meets.
Our investment in the strategies to get, you're right. And this is a bona fide question, this is not a judgment statement. That the investment to get students from, sorry, from approaches to meets. So the investment to get students from approaches to meets would not, there would be no overlap to get students to approaches?
There would be some.
There would be some, like a material some, immaterial some? And I'll give you a simplistic perspective that I think, right? If I'm training to do a mile, a mile run, do I want to set my bar at a half mile? Because I'll get to the half mile if I'm training for the mile run, right? And that's really simplistic, so I'm trying to understand, trying to, you know, break this out of my head. So if we were to focus on meets, how much of the investment would also help us get to the approaches?
I would make, here's how, the analogy I'd make for running. Okay, so if we're setting a goal, like say we've got a class full of non-runners. If we set a goal that you're going to run a half marathon, so think of the masters as a marathon, meets is half marathon, approaches is like a 5 or 10K. If we've got all of our kids sitting on the couch right now, it's better to put in strategies that are going to help you run a 5 or 10K. Because that, you're going to hit that, like you can get there. But if you set for a half marathon.
Without some injury.
You may still have injury.
You tell me to go run, I, I can run a 5K. I could maybe really, if I trained, get to a 10K, but I, there's, I'm not even going to try. Me, or anybody else, not going to try for a half marathon. And so the strategies that you put in place, you might get a couple of the kids that would have been in the did not meet for the half marathon. But you're going to get, if you focus your strategy on helping the majority of the kids, then you're going to get more of them to the approaches level. That is the logic.
And possibly even more to the meets. Because when you're thinking about increasing that 5% of meets, you're really only increasing the meets based on that 27% that got approached. You're not even hitting the rest of that.
So maybe we shouldn't look at it as conceding on any population of students. We'd rather ensure that the foundational, infrastructure of knowledge and skills are there in order to build on that.
That's a good way to put it.
This indicates the foundation isn't there.
So I, when I'm thinking about it as a teacher, I'm thinking about my instruction. And I'm going to have in my class, the majority of my students are not there yet. And I'm going to have some that are. My classroom instruction is going to focus on the majority of the group and I'm going to do enrichment and differentiation to push those other kids further. Because they're ready for it. But these kids, if I do that with these kids, they're not going to get, they're not, not going to get there because they don't have this.
And the next thing, is another thing you have to look at is that you're looking to build a foundation on which you can build the next year's growth. And so we have to fill the hole because in eighth grade, now we're at a do or die year. Because we're getting ready for you to go into high school. But I got to fill the holes that are at seventh grade before I can even start building eighth grade to get you ready for Algebra I. Because we don't want them to get to Algebra I as, as a ninth grader. And then that becomes the thing that keeps you from graduating. So the holes have to be addressed where you are at that particular time.
We shouldn't look at it low aspiration, a little bit more so.
More bang for the buck.
Yes.
And the vulnerability of saying that we have a tremendous foundational skill gap that we need to address.
Yes.
Right. And if you do look at this, to your point, Trustee Macias, this goal gets you to pre-pandemic levels.
And what is that number, too far away from the.
20. And it was at 19.
And that would only, that would be fine if we weren't already significantly below region 20 and the state. If we were, if it was on par, I could live with that. Say, that's great, my community's getting the best from us. We're not. And so clearly, that being doubled, that's, that's just not acceptable. I, I can't go back and say, you know, we're going to still be twice below all those schools in our county and behind the state and we're good with it. I just think it sends the wrong message. I really want to say, there are best practices, as I said yesterday, and Dr. Duarte, Toppin, and Cece, I'm sorry. Yes. You can, um, think about the fact that someone's already doing it right. There's already, we have a consistent issue with this area. It's being done, so let's find out what they're doing and why we're not there yet. And if it's about our students, then I've already talked about social emotional support. I've already talked about more tutoring, I've talked after-school care for middle school, more guidance. There are things that I think we're trying to do. I'm sorry?
Summer programs.
Summer programs, all of this helps there. And in this discussion, I have not heard yet what we're doing in fifth grade and sixth grade to prepare these seventh graders to be ready. Because that's another strategy where we put resources in. So we're not accepting small increments of growth that won't even match the state or the region. We're expecting better results. That's what I would like to say.
And we would see the fifth and sixth grade in-progress measures. That's where we would see the growth.
Not at the, developing all the strategies and everything out, that's their job.
So.
But we might as well put it at 100, everything at 100. Because that's what we want.
Now, I think you're being funny.
No, I'm not being funny, I'm just saying.
We're trying to be realistic and that just is not, underperforming.
Yes, you have an issue there.
Let's hold it down for a second. Because we all agreed to specific rules, so let's just hold it down.
So I think what, I mean, I think it's a, I mean, it's a fair discussion. There's fair questions on both sides, right? I think, look, and I think you put it this way too, Trustee Diaz, and you guys have also. It is a vulnerable place that we're saying right now. We are not doing what we need to be doing at seventh grade math. We, everybody has recognized that. The numbers are not where we want them to be. So we know that those strategies are going to be deployed and you need to monitor progress as a board. So the board needs to look at, like, if we set a five-year goal, let's say we set a five-year goal at 20, let's say we set it at 25. What, whatever comes up in this room, if those strategies are deployed and they work better than we thought they would, faster than we thought they were, then we adjust goals. Right? We don't sit at 25. If we know we're already going to get 10% gain, or you know, 10 gain, 10-point gains, or if we hit 20 in three years, then we're going to readjust goals, right? Then, and, and that goal could be even adjusted for at meet standard or at eighth grade level. You know, we can look at different things. So right now, we have to just recognize that we have five goals, five areas of need that we focused on, that you guys have focused on. And so let's set a goal that stretches, but is not unreasonable. And so we have to think about that in terms of even the other goals that we've set and what have been there. You know, what has been the, the growth gap where we've moved? How, we've never moved more than 20, 20 points on any one goal. So 20 points puts this at 25. This is a 15-point gain. Is it where we want to be? Absolutely not. And everybody's recognized that. So the board needs to decide, and I think at this, we can just say, these are the two numbers. This one is a big stretch. This is still a stretch, I would say, if I'm looking at you leaders over there, you experts. So from the board's perspective, to move this conversation forward, where, let's just go around the room and find out where you want to be. Where do you want to be? Where will you accept? Not where we want, because we know we want something different. Where will you accept that this is a feasible, attainable goal that is going to challenge our district to change what's happening now so that things go better for kids? Okay?
I didn't hear what was up?
He wants. Does anybody have?
Oh.
Does anybody have a thought? Or want to put themselves on here? Trustee Canoyer?
I would like us to look at the approaches goal and look at that 42.
Okay. So 42, oh, sorry, I was at, this was meets, I was looking at meets. I think we had already decided to go to approaches, so sorry about that. So 42, 27 to 42 is 15 points. Uh, if you add in, or it goes into 47 if you go to 20, that's a big, big jump. But, and it's getting closer, closer to where we were pre-pandemic. So you're at 42. Trustee Eaton, are you still processing? Or you have a thought? You're confused? Okay, can we clear it up for you? No, not now?
Not right now.
Okay.
I would say 42.
It's like, when did the 42 come?
I'm sorry?
I don't see it on here.
42 is our goal, so that would be the goal. So we're discussing whether we go a goal of 15 points over five years or a goal of 20 points over five years.
Okay, okay, I got it.
At approaches. So we switch Ken up over to approaches because we think that'll address more, it'll build the foundation faster.
Because we can cover more children.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
Approaches.
Approaches at what target?
From the 27%.
For, we're, we're starting at 27.
Right.
We got a target of.
Is that 47%?
Is that forty-seven percent?
Cause forty-two is a fifteen-point gain, the, the, this is a, this is a stretch? This is a stretch, stretch.
Okay, forty-two percent.
Trustee King?
Rodriguez?
No, we got that, Rodriguez? Looked right at it.
Um, I would maybe suggest forty-five. I feel uncomfortable with the forty-two. Um, well, because like, that's still a lot of kids who are not even hitting the like, passing bar that the state has set. Um, but I understand that forty-seven is, um, is a lot. So I'm suggesting forty-five.
And you're right, it is a lot of kids. Yeah. And that's gonna be the challenge.
So you said, here?
I said forty-five, I was putting, I was offering.
She's offering another one, okay. Have you processed?
I was gonna say forty-five.
You, you can say forty-five, it's up there now.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but I'm also, I will continue to my colleagues on forty-two as well. I'm comfortable in that range.
In this range, okay. Trustee Macias? Are you comfortable with either of those numbers?
Oh, heck no.
Yeah, that, we're, we're underachieving in every, every way possible here. Now, the thing is, we're scared for some reason to say we can do better, even though historically, pre-pandemic, we've done better. We've hit fifty-five percent. We've, in fact, I'm, I'm looking at twenty-sixteen, we're sixty-two percent. I'm thinking that the numbers I'm looking at in twenty thirteen and twenty twelve had us at sixty-nine percent, sixty-three percent of the combined approaches and meets. So, we've done better. We can't accept less because we're afraid we won't get there. So if we're gonna set five-year goals, again, this isn't next year, this is five years. They need to be strong, and more so because this is our weakest area. This is a chink in our armor. We are clearly underperforming in this area. And, and I certainly will want to know why. But, bottom line, if we're gonna set goals, they need to be ambitious. I don't see forty-five being ambitious, uh, I don't see anything in the forties being ambitious. That's all still below where we were. And if we're talking to our community about being that place for people to come, to be that district that's going to excel and create, I mean, come on now. How can we sell that if we're below the state and the region? So I would dare say, it has to be, has to at least be, if we're gonna use the approaches, I would say twenty thirteen numbers, sixty-nine percent.
No. May I add, you, you just said when you combine approaches and meets, that's actually not the way the accountability works anymore. The meets are the kids within the approaches who scored at a higher level.
Thank you, you're right, you're right, you are correct on that, thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Davis. So then if we do that, then I would say fifty-five percent. We get back to where we were, and, and I can barely live with that, but at least we're back to where we were pre-pandemic. I just hate the thought that it took us five years to get right back where we were. We should be excelling, and I think the plan is that we are. So I'm not saying that we're, we're not planning to. But if we're gonna be a board, we want to also set that same expectation. So, that's where I would, I put myself.
Okay. I don't think we heard from you, Trustee Canoia, did we? You said, so I got seven marks up there?
You can leave this here.
Oh, no, I thought we counted. Did you put your mark in? Did I put your mark? You got a mark? Where, where are you feeling?
Forty-five would be good.
I'm sorry?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? Okay. So we're split, we're clearly pretty far from consensus on this goal. So the board has to make a decision. We can split the difference here, and we can say that we're just not gonna have consensus on this goal.
And then what would the goal be then?
Well, you could put it right in between the middle of these.
Yes, knowing that we're at forty-two, forty-five, we just, we just don't know.
And we, we just, we don't have a consensus, we have a majority of the board, but we don't have, we don't have a consensus. And, and, you know, that doesn't mean that we don't value everyone's thoughts and processes, and I certainly understand where Trustee Macias is coming from. Um, but we gotta set a goal. And so, we, we might have to just say, you know, where are, where are you gonna vote? Where are you gonna vote on this goal? So that we get this goal in place. It's probably what's gonna happen, happen on our third grade math one as well, right? So right now, if we were to go with a forty-three, who of the boards, by a show of hand, would be, would set that, would codify that? One, two, three, four, five. Five, two? Did you?
Yeah.
Okay. But you're an A. Okay. So, we're gonna go with approaches and a forty-three preliminary goal target. So that's, how does that feel to the leaders in the room? To the, not leaders, you're all leaders, to the experts, sorry, the education experts.
Forty-three or forty-two?
Forty-three. We split this.
Okay.
It'd be really forty-three point five, but I don't like decimals in our goals. Okay. So let's go back. Let's go back to third grade math. Not that one. I got a lot of these flags, don't I? Okay, third grade math, right now. We were stretching, we went from fifty-five, where's our stuff on that?
Oh, that's right. Yes, thank you.
So this is our third grade numbers. We had, uh, a recommendation of thirty. It was a starting point of twenty-one. So twenty-one, we had state, region, board, pre-pandemic. Uh, this is where we were, pre, our Judson was, pre-pandemic. So, you guys had fifty-five. Which is this one here. So we gotta get somewhere between a thirty and a fifty-five. Well, we don't have to get somewhere between, we can pick either one of those numbers. But that's the range right now that we're looking at. So the experts are at thirty. The board is at fifty-five. I think there was some agreement here, somewhere around thirty-six? Or did I just make that up? I wrote the number down, so that's why I'm thinking there was some agreement. At thirty-six?
That's, uh, the thirty-six came off, you know, we added fifteen, you know, for the three-point part over five.
Mm-hmm.
That's where.
That's right, that's right, good, good memory. So that's a fifteen-point gain. Thirty-six. Once again, yes.
Could, could one of the board members explain why they thought fifty-five? I forgot, I'm sorry.
You guys remember?
We thought it was a bigger number to start with, didn't we?
I think they were trying to go to pre-pandemic.
But I don't think that was, right.
And that you were only up by one percentage point on your baseline. So your baseline was twenty-two percent, it was twenty-one. The original goal ever was, was at forty percent, I see fifty-five, so I.
I don't know how it got.
I think the baselines we were going off of were pre-pandemic baseline, since we were looking at forty-six. And we were given the information about the pandemic results, but like, we were, we were facing it. I think we were, our logic was that like, well, as the years become more normal, kids will bounce back faster, especially in the younger age. But, I, I see that would be some, a bit of a faulty factor.
We were always going with a twenty-two, because that's the number we thought we had, now it's twenty-one. Last, this is our dialogue from last night. We went, this was our range that we talked about. We went from, we had forty-four, we had fifty-five, fifty-one. Those were kind of the areas, you can remember, you talked, you went to groups, and that's what you came up with?
We'd like to change ours.
You wanna change yours? To what?
Forty-two.
You guys were at forty-four, fifty-five, fifty-one, and now there's a recommendation for forty-two. This was started one point lower. So these were, so it's closer into where you were talking about yesterday?
Yeah, that's the answer.
I mean, that's still a really big stretch.
It's a twenty point down for sure.
And that takes us back to where we were in twenty, well, almost where we were in twenty eighteen, and then twenty nineteen. Cause this is meets, right?
Yes, it's meets.
It's meets. So that's a twenty-one point gain.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a stretch. It's gonna require adult behavior change, I assume, challenges, different strategies.
Actually, the adult behavior changes are much harder than the student changes.
Cause they're the ones that gotta do it, yeah.
Yep. So, how do you guys feel about that number? Forty-two is the number, is the target, which is a pretty significant twenty-one points, bigger than any of our other goals too, except for maybe the seventh grade one we just named, right? I can't remember. I think I covered that. So, how do you feel about forty-two?
Forty-two.
I still think that's a really big stretch when we're asking teachers to change behaviors in reading and in math.
So what's your number that you feel like?
My number, I, I could live with thirty-five.
Okay. You guys gave us forty-two.
But we'd like that one better.
I just know how difficult it is to change teachers' behavior in one area.
Yeah.
But that's what it's gonna take, right? That's what it's gonna take to dig ourselves out of this.
It's the same teacher.
Yes, exactly.
So they're not, it's not just, you know, only the math teachers have to do this. The reading teachers and the math teachers have to do, I mean, it, cause they're both, and. So that goal's going to be, the teachers, the people with the boots on the ground are gonna have to meet both goals, right? Yeah. At the same time, so whatever strategies or resources we employ, sometimes it's not about the money, or you know, throwing money at the problem, it's that, that it takes.
The building of capacity.
To adapt, to build the capacity to reach that level of instruction that we want to reach.
Right.
Please don't mistake.
The whole buy-in process, everything.
The time it takes for planning when you're doing something new.
So the.
It's not like they have any time now.
The strategies you deploy with your teachers on literacy, do they affect the math? They would affect the math scores?
Somewhat, but it's a very specific type of reading you have to teach for a math test.
It's a different type of, of, of.
It's a genre, it's a genre.
It is. And as a former principal, as a former principal, I can tell you that when we, when you have to embark on something like this, when you're looking at numbers like this, and you're trying to put a, a plan and a system into place, it, it's getting the buy-in from the, but then you have to do the job embedded professional development that goes along with that, but then there's the, the planning piece. And then the actual delivery of the instruction and monitoring it. And, and at a, at a high school, it is, you have experts, for the lack of a better word. You have a math teacher, you have an English teacher, so they.
And what was that?
During the pandemic, seventy-six point five.
Okay, so seventy-six point five is a baseline from, that would be the baseline, seventy-six point five.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the baseline be this, this school year?
Yeah, it will be this year, I'm just trying to give them some context. So, seventy-six, I cannot write anymore, seventy-six.
And that seventy-six was the beginning of your measure, or end of year?
It was beginning of your measure last school year after they were out for three months.
Yep.
I suspect that that would be lower after about one year of virtual instruction. So I wouldn't be able to provide that data until the end of mid-October, end of October.
Can you give me the year before that? Kindergarten readiness, or is that not readily available?
That, that piece does not readily be available, because it's not like the star that gets automatically loaded into our.
Okay, so on this goal, we're gonna need to rely on you guys. So what do you would recommend is gonna be the growth, uh, from, like, just percentage points. Like, percentage points from where our kids are gonna show up this year, when you've got them all tested, which you'll be, have them tested by October twenty-seventh, is that what you said? And, and the following year, when you have another group of full pre-K peoples, peoples coming in. Any idea?
So you want to assess.
Are we talking, yeah.
Yeah, now that it, cause if it would be a different cohort of students, if, if we just keep it at the beginning of the year.
So you got, well, to me, you guys wanted to measure kindergarten readiness, based on the pre-K program that you have in place.
I think we were trying to evaluate how effective our pre-K program is.
Was, yes, that's what we were doing.
So it's not necessarily kindergarten readiness for every student, where we wanna know how effective our kindergarten program, pre-K program is in getting them ready for kindergarten.
Right. So do you not want to know the data for non-pre-K kids?
Well, I'm not sure.
I didn't interpret that that's what y'all wanted, but, but maybe it is.
I thought we were gonna disaggregate them, but we were still gonna measure it all together.
Well, we have to decide where we're looking and. You could measure the effectiveness of pre-K four on that year for a pre-K four student using the circle. So, for example, last year, Boyd was sixteen percent, and the effect that it had, by the end of year was seventy percent. So if you're looking to stretch that for the coming school year, we can add percentage points saying that a student who enters a pre-K four will grow by so many points and, and extend that, um, if you wanted seventy.
I don't know how to make that a five-year goal, other than to set it a hundred percent.
The other thing then is we could look at kindergarten period, end-of-year kindergarten scores, tracking our students who went through pre-K to see how successful they were in completing kindergarten. As, and, you know, compared to all kindergarten students. And use the kindergarten data. So what we want is, is our pre-K program making our students more successful as they go through school.
Well, then why don't we make the pre-K.
So we, Mr. Macias, this is really one of your goals that you wanted to look at. So I wanna be sure that we're honing in on what it is you want to. Are you looking at just how successful our kids are going through pre-K? Or is our pre-K making them more successful in terms of their kindergarten completion? And, and following it on after that, of course, but.
It, it was originally, and again, I'm open to discussion. So the idea initially was to examine how ready our, our kids going for PK three and PK four would be going into kindergarten. But, but as we look at it, I mean, I'm okay with the assessment in, in the year for kindergarten as well. Uh, I'm open, I mean, I'm not tied to it, but the initial idea was just how are we monitoring, monitoring the effectiveness of our curriculum in pre-K? That was the initial thought.
Would you be okay, would the board be okay with having pre-K success or kindergarten readiness as a goal progress measure to third grade literacy and math? readiness as a goal progress measure, the third grade literacy and math?
Instead of a separate goal by itself.
Instead of a separate goal by itself.
Which was still required under the early long-range plans that we, that we developed. I think you were part of that and several other members were part of that at that time. We're still required to actually look at every single measure from third to second to first to pre-K. And it's part of, of the long-range plan that we would come and present to you in MoI and ODI for all of these assessments. We're actually required.
Okay.
And we could then break it to see, not this year, but next year, pre-K and non-pre-K. You know, where they are in kindergarten, right?
And do a comparison that way.
And at first, that's what I thought that you were looking for, Mr. Macias. I thought that what you were looking for was a comparison, but that's what I thought I heard you say yesterday.
And I may have, it's been a long day.
So if that's the case, let's see if the board is all okay with that. That means we take away that last final goal, not that we're not monitoring it, we're shifting it to progress measure. So you would still see those numbers and measure progress, but that's a really hard, I can't even in my head, put that into a five-year goal. I'm, I'm really struggling with it.
So couldn't we do it, as Suzanne was saying, couldn't we do it and make it part of the third grade reading and math?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. It becomes a progress measure underneath third grade, which you're already measuring anyway.
So what Ceci is showing, Mr. Macias, is a report that we had showed the board, I don't remember how long ago it was, but Mr. Macias wasn't on the board, so just to catch him up in regards to how we had already done those goals. And the board actually approved that because by law, you have to approve it, and it was one of the committees, or I don't remember, but I think it was.
It was the curriculum committee?
No.
Long-range planning?
Long-range planning.
And did you put the target, annual targets in front of them?
There was, I think, I thought it was YouTube, but I could be wrong. But did we put who in?
Annual targets in front of them?
Yes, we did.
Do they, are they higher or lower than these?
I would have, we did it by district and by campus. And I have to be honest and tell you, I don't remember exactly, so.
Okay.
I don't want to.
Yeah, we'll just leave them as progress measures because you're already measuring that.
Okay.
So is everybody else okay with that? Does that make sense to you? Have we lost you?
No, not quite. Freezing in this room.
Oh, no.
Well, it's better now, I'm a betting chicken.
So are you guys okay with having measuring progress of kindergarten readiness but doing it under our third grade goals?
We would have just four.
Four goals.
And that's plenty.
I know.
Because what we're trying to do is hard.
Yes, this is hard work, to your point, right. So you're okay with that?
Yes.
You're okay? You two are okay with having that be a progress measure?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, good. All right. Goodness me. What time is it?
Are you guys delirious, Olivia?
No.
I do, I feel like, I think everybody needs to get up and stretch and not, so I, and first of all, I think y'all need to, like, not just listen to me either, so what I'd love for you guys to do, since we have these four, I'm going to, you have questions still?
No, no.
You're looking like you do.
This is our, this is our active listening thing.
Okay. All right.
And more goals?
I was like, he said me. I said, no, you, everybody's a teacher. Are you not already tonight?
So what I'd like you guys to do is, and, and you don't own these, these, these progress measures that we keep talking about are going to be set by the, we're going to go away now and the board or the leaders, the experts are going to set those and come back and make recommendations with base signs and targets and all of those great things. But what I had, we tried to do last night, but we ran out of time, that's making me nervous.
I know.
Right?
We told it about.
Is to have, for you to go and break down and talk amongst yourselves about, like, what would you want to see in your head? What would be progress measures, three to five, under each of these four goals that you have? Just big, broad swath, right? No numbers, you don't need to go data diving again. So if you're looking at third grade literacy, then what is important to you? And we can do this all together, or you can do it in small groups just so you are not listening, sitting and getting.
What kinds of things?
What would you like to do?
You said well, it was Serena.
Small groups?
Yeah. Let's do it together, or we, can we just list some on there, or y'all don't want to do it together? No? Okay.
Let's, we'll come back, we'll just do ten minutes.
What if, what if we.
You three.
Strike down in the idea.
You three, how's that?
At this point in it, and we just, but we generate a small group and then.
And share out.
Then we'll write it up, I'll write them down, okay? How about we do it this way? You three.
In small groups.
You three, you three.
Okay.
So they need to be predictive of the goal. That's what I'm asking you right now, predictive of the goal and influenceable by the superintendent and her team. I don't need targets, I don't need any of that.
He did it last night.
He did our last thing he did last night.
I can't do that big.
You know what?
What did you think I was looking at you for?
So we're looking at, what can we look at as data points to determine if we're meeting our goal as the progress measures? So what kind of information do we look at? Will they come and share with us to say, okay, we're going to meet this goal because we look at this measure, this measure, this measure?
We're just going to take ten minutes.
So what I said, yes. The third grade reading was.
Thank you for bringing me more paper.
We will look at the universal screener. We'll look at the benchmark test.
Not that anybody can read my writing, but.
Which is a really star. They do unit tests. At the end of every unit, they do a standardized test across the grade level. And I think then we look, can also look at some information about RTI, how many students are progressing in RTI. And then we also look at, of course, that's not, it's not third grade stuff, but then you look at that same thing in second grade, first grade, right? So that we see, are we on track moving on?
So.
So let's do pre-K. I'll put pre-K stuff in there.
I think I'm trying to do different.
And then it's basically the same thing for math, the same measures.
Really?
Yeah, they do the same thing because you do, you do a universal screen for math and reading, it's required by state law. You have to do that because what that does is it says, okay, these kids are tier one, they're ready for classroom instruction. These kids are tier two, they have some gaps, and so they're going to need some additional instruction that usually is handled by the classroom teacher, okay? Tier three then means they are so far below or have enough gaps that they need a pull-out with a specialist or RTI teachers in a small group to catch them up. So that's how the RTI is, one, two, and three. So you do, and you do the same thing in reading as you do in math. Now, the RTI instruction always works different because in math, you're teaching discrete skills, and in reading, you're teaching household. It's more of a universal holistic, you know, when you learn to read kind of thing, but you can, you can go in in reading and go back to, did they miss phonemic awareness somewhere? Did they miss letter recogni, maybe they don't have good letter sound, they don't know the sounds of the letters. They can name the letter, they don't know the sound of it. Or is it, is it chunking that they need? Is it blending that they need? Or is it vocabulary development they need? And that's a critical issue with a lot of our kids who come from a low socioeconomic background, they haven't been exposed to the vocabulary. Yeah. Well, and, and it's even harder for English language learners because, you know, they've got two languages. Those are smart kids.
Like what is happening?
And then the, or progress monitors for CCMR, that sheet. All those things that we're looking at, the certificate levels, you know, are we there? Mm-hmm. And is that it? Seventh grade math? So for seventh grade math, I didn't do that one. Well, so for seventh grade math, you're looking again at the screener.
They're later.
Yeah.
That's not going to be a problem.
Yeah.
You're looking at, um, unit tests. And RTI information.
So the formula is basic.
It's very similar kinds of data, which makes it easier to track from grade level to grade level. Now, the unit tests can vary because maybe the curriculum changes a little bit on what you teach and what, what time of the year. And when the teacs change, of course, all that stuff changes. Um, I think if there's anything else.
But they're just not, I think, not stressful? Like, are we, are we needing to.
There's a lot of things that are more subjective, but you want as much as you can that is non-subjective, objective information. I mean, you could always do. I don't know if they're doing any additional literacy testing now. We used to do the universal screener and another test, and I don't know if they do that now.
Like that map test?
I'm not sure whether they're using.
I mean, but.
They've changed, I know they've changed the instruments.
So like, whether.
But we used to do a universal screener, and then we did the DRA and all the old literacy classes because that told you exactly where the weakness of the kid was.
If a kid is.
Was it fluency? Was it comprehension? Was it phonemic awareness? Was it phonological?
Get a little gallon approach.
Right, because the sixth grade test, there's.
Do a running record on. And why is it two?
Yes.
Like if I'm all right on the tree.
I taught everything from, from second grade to seventh grade. I taught first grade at summer school.
Does that make sense?
That was a trip. And then in tag, I taught K five. I did tag, yes. I learned kinders, not madam.
Yes.
They are busy.
They are something else nowadays.
Love Ted, Ted, because we had to give them a test for tag. And I'd say, um, they had a little marker to follow along for the, the things on the end, so put your marker under the table and they, under the, yeah, because it had like a ta, under the line with the table, and they put it under the table and just giggle, you know? So silly. And the gifted ones are really busy.
Because they were bored and.
They were fun. It was, but boy, I was exhausted on Kinder Day.
Did you have a eight or a four board member?
No, uh-uh, it was just me. Just me. And I had like, I don't know, eight or nine kinder kids. But we did, we did a lot of hands-on kinds of things, so we looked at life cycles with what, with a focus of kinder. So we hatched eggs for the kindergarten, and we had, I had an incubator and got eggs, and we did that in classroom. We did the same thing with butterflies, so we were looking at, and we did tadpoles and we did ladybird. And then we also built a terrarium. Each kid made the terrarium so they could kind of see what's the cycle in there, because the water cycle has to do with it. So the whole thing was cycles in kinder. It was a lot of fun. Did a lot of literature with it. And then the older kids, I did a whole lot more critical thinking kinds of stuff with. I taught algebra to my fifth graders, hands-on equation with manipulism, algebra. But each one had different focus. One of them, we did mysteries of the world kind of thing, so, you know, the, the Martha lights, you know, we were trying to figure what's the evidence you have, what's the theory you can suppose about what happens later, you know, after doing research on it. One of them, we did an art focus, you know, they had to choose a, a style of art and artist that they, they really liked, and they had to research the artist, and then they had to create a piece of art in that style. So that was my fourth graders did that with, and they loved it. And then they ended up having to summarize the artist with a museum card, right? Because they always put a little something, so then we had those displayed in the hall. It's a lot of work, but I loved it. My little geekies. My little geekies. And I spent a lot of time on social emotional with those kids because they needed it.
I did nothing but special. I was special for four years and then became a counselor. Always so shy, so shy. And I thought I was going to do a career change, you know, beginning years of a counselor because I was doing the application for a lot of, you know, kiddo and bear and everything. And. Call for other.
Mm-hmm.
And. We kept the course.
Yeah.
That was interesting.
You're not counseling, that's the thing. At middle school, you don't counseling, you do schedule changes and you do.
And I was.
And you do testing. Because I went, I, I started for a master's in counseling, and I got to the actual, I didn't finish it, I was nine hours short. But I started looking at what are we doing, how will I use this? And even at elementary, they weren't doing.
And so I would be even banished with that degree, you know, I was probably the only one, you know, with the internship, you know, with the actual job, you know? In class, you know, they're talking about, you know, the book burning, whatever, and just like, oh, it's so.
How it works. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I did that, I said, okay, I'm, I'm not going to do this anymore. I helped open a school. My God, that was so much work. We opened the law, and while I was in the middle of that, and.
Wait, you did that open?
Oh, God, it's been twenty-five years.
Is that in ninety?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ninety-five-ish. And, yeah, that's a lot of work to start a new school.
Oh, I know.
Anyway, and then I went back later and got my master's in curriculum.
Okay. Let's see if we can pull together.
And then they. For what I wanted to do, and it was focused on technology, instructional technology. So I did, I taught the Intel Teacher Future Program, the way back, the way we incorporate technology, teaching teachers. So I did a little.
Get you out of time for sure tonight.
During my time.
So, on goal number one, what did you come up with? That's third grade reading. Goal or progress measure?
Progress measure.
The progress measure.
For the goal. Okay, okay.
Universal screener.
Universal screening, so you want, at what grade?
All grade, you look at.
All grades, in the third grade.
Up to third grade, yeah.
Every year.
Because that tells you if they're on track.
Screener, so pre-K, K, first, second.
And third.
And third.
Because I'll do it at the beginning of the year, third grade.
Okay. You guys benchmark? Benchmark.
It's a release test.
Unit test.
Yeah. The benchmark is a release star test, what we call it a benchmark here, right? The star release test, the benchmark. So that would be third grade.
What else did you say?
The comma that we said was going to come after all of these goals was like, with, with no guess by, by the disaggregated racial groups, and so, or demographic groups is what it is. Yeah. So, um, like, being able to see all of that data disaggregated as well would be important. I'm calling the disaggregated demographic groups because I was told by somebody that subcops can be derogatory.
Oh, really?
Because it's a sub, like it's below.
Okay.
Um, okay, so I'm trying to, like, I train myself to use the much longer.
I'm related data.
Say, by student population. Student population, that's a.
I totally relate to you in the right gym. All right. Anybody, did you guys have anything to add to this?
Uh, yes. So because your two goals for third grade math and third grade literacy are related to what we require to produce in the state, the state also recommends that those progress measures are defined as universal screener for pre-K, K, first, second, and third. So that's going to be in the long-range board plan, because you will, will approve them So, that's gonna be in the long range more plan, if you will, approve them, okay? And it also disaggregates student groups, and it predefines what that measurement is. So, I just want, when we say no gaps between the disaggregated data, the state actually recognizes that each student group has a different target goal.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that when you do see that, and I'm just gonna read out a few. So, the African-American student group has a target goal of thirty-two percent, whereas the white student group has a target goal of sixty percent. And this is set by the state based on the years of trends that they have seen. And versus a special education group of ninety percent. So, these goals are set, and that's what we didn't even talk about domain theory. That's what domain theory showed.
Maybe it's without widening any pre-existing gaps.
We could also address that in the guardrail conversation when we get to it in the next training. All right, so that's goal one. Was there any different ones? I assume they're pretty much the same for.
Well, I would think reading and math would be the same.
Same, yeah. Yes.
So, this is third grade. Reading, third grade math. Okay, how about, let's try CCMR? That was not right. These go through. What, or did you guys come up with anything different for those? What were you, what would you do or talk about?
I would say eighth grade star, and then the EOC exam. Eighth grade star. And then the, the high school EOC exam. And then the PSAT. Are we, do we administer PSAT to all students?
No, the two, yes. Would you want in subgrade, one in older, I can't even say, because he gets tenth, tenth grade.
Tenth grade, they can.
And we also do the SAT. You have AP exam, we have TSI.
Did the ASAP test fall in any of those?
Uh, no. Not account toward accountability. We do track it though, ASAP.
But it wouldn't be under CCMR?
No, it's not.
Because they're, they're negative. So, they really should take the M out of CCMR right now. Dual credit, dual credit numbers are in there also.
And AP.
AP exam, ID exam.
And AP can even be, that can even go deeper with enrollment. That certainly could be an equity issue that you can bring into all of these.
So, would that be AD, ID?
Yeah.
A, AP slash ID.
ID, yeah. And then you have your industry certification.
Yeah, certifications. Are there any, so you got eighth grade stars kind of an indicator that is, that is different? You could have, you know, we can, you're only gonna get three to five goal progress measures under each of these goals, so. You know, when you guys come back, what are the most predictive and what would you say, especially under this one? Like, I know that, trustee Macias, you talked about the SAT being something very important. AP enrollment, is that something that is important? Dual credit, you know? Are there things, certifications, is that something to tie in on your list?
PTE.
PTE.
And we're exploring adding ACT.
And exploring ACT.
ACT in addition to the ACT, because of the science component.
Okay. So, what's great?
They're moving, yeah.
That's interesting.
Okay, seventh grade, did we have any?
It would be the same pretty much as goal two, right? As our goal two. It's the same kind of data.
Just a vertical screen.
Benchmark. Benchmark. Get it, yeah.
So, just that different grade line, right? Yeah, four, fifth.
Yeah, you're gonna look at five, six.
Fourth, seven, six.
Fourth comes in there too, right?
Because your higher class falls off the third, so, yeah.
So, four, five, six.
And as a, as an actually, it wouldn't be part of this, but we've talked about tutoring, intervention, after-school care, our after-school programs, I should say. Would we want to see what the utility is for those programs or those efforts? As just additional?
Those are strategies that would be deployed to get to these ultimate goals. So, you would definitely get, it wouldn't necessarily be a progress measure, but when the board comes, or when the leadership team comes and talks to you about strategy, it would be incorporated, yeah?
And the reason I ask is because I had mentioned in our discussion yesterday that after-school programming needs to provide a measurable outcome. It can't be just sit here and play games all day, unless there's a goal to playing games and trying to build rapport. But trying to measure what that program's goal is, I would like to tie at least our elementary programming to increased performance in reading or math or something like that.
I think too, though, like, I agree, and I wish that my son's after-school program had a bit more of an academic component to it. But I will say that if my school does not have an after-school program, it's a deal breaker whether I'll even enroll him, because like, that is a non-negotiable for me to be able to work. So.
For a lot of people.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. If it's deployed as a strategy to meet one of these goals, then it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, a separate benchmark or a separate progress measure, but we would, we'd get that data. It would be included in the strategic data that you would get. But we've named it, so you know that we're thinking about it. Anything else that you guys have that fell under seventh grade that was different than this? No?
We do formative assessments, which is kind of like benchmarks, but they're actually unit, to track.
Unit test.
It's like a unit test to track students' progress, so like, you heard. What's that?
A unit, unit assessment, unit test.
Yeah, most of the data is gonna be interim, so that we can measure it multiple times a year. So, formative is obviously not solid data. And then you've got a permanent measure here, so that, you know, you would only get one time a year. You wouldn't get a progress on that. And what we really want to do is have progress showing three times a year, so that you know you're moving towards your goal. So, the next steps for, we're gonna take a little break. So, this is the last of this group of training, but if you need to come back, we've got several things that we want to do. But in the interim, your leadership team, and we're gonna work together to make sure that if they need support, I'm here for that as well. The leadership team is gonna go out, and they're gonna write your willpower. They're gonna get baselines, they're gonna get targets, we're gonna have annual targets on the goals, we're gonna look at that. So, they have a ton of work to do, and that's why they're the experts, they get to do the hard, hard work. And they'll come back to you guys with those progress measures and those recommendations, so we'll have a complete slate of what our outcome, student outcome goals will look like. And in the next training, we're focusing only on the non-negotiables in the guardrails. And once we have those, which hopefully are not gonna be quite as hard, then we're gonna get those together. And then we have a whole framework, we're building a monitoring calendar, so that everybody knows where we're going with it and when we're gonna see data, right? It's all the structure, and then we'll also talk about, like, how does this, what does this look like in policy? How do we infuse equity into these conversations? What does that look like in policy? And we can also look at your operating procedures. There's a few other things that we can do to wrap up, to really shore up your governance space. So, I won't see you for a couple weeks, three weeks, four weeks, maybe.
We don't have a date yet, do we?
I don't think we do.
We don't.
So, we'll get a date. But thank you guys for this hard work. You've done some tremendous work over the last six sessions, five sessions, because I think we missed one. Five sessions, so I appreciate the way you leaned in, the questions you asked. I think they have been really great questions, and I think you've had amazing dialogue within this room too, so. Kudos, kudos, and thanks for having me. And thank you.
Thank you, really, really much.
We could be here Thursday. We'd be back on Thursday.
So, we have no other business? I would like to say, oh, here we go. Betty, we did not have any action at all on item three. We did not go to a session. We did not discuss, and she's gonna like that on the news.
And nothing on operating procedures.
Right, because, number three, discussion.
And do y'all ever want to approve those, or do you want me just to leave them alone, or?
I think we should wait and not.
Okay.
Until we kind of get done with.
Then we're, yeah. So that everything else has.
Okay, no problem.
So, if there's no other discussion, then at.